Just about 7:00 PM, a little after. We will call the Foxborough Planning Board meeting to order. There will be certain individuals who may attend this evening via Zoom, including Mr. Bressi, is he going to be on?
He's not on yet, but he may.
He will be.
I know he's going to try.
Um.
I think we might have to delay our first.
I'm sorry, what?
We'll start with the planners' report.
Yeah, that's fine.
We don't, Norm's not here yet. Okay, so, well, welcome back. We haven't met since October, I don't think. And we won't be meeting again until January, so this is the time of year we don't see each other that much. But we've been busy working. One of the things, the projects we've had in the office is getting our engineering consultant updated. We've had the same consultant for, I believe, eight years, and technically you're supposed to update it every three, five years under procurement, so we're going ahead and doing that. We did get seven proposals. Woo-hoo. Always wonderful when you actually get a response. So Gabby and I have gone through them with procurement, started reviewing it, but we thought maybe one planning board member might want to take a quick skim, or more are welcome, but figuring maybe one victim would want to take a look through. And I kind of already pre-begged Tom to do it because he's in the construction industry and, poor guy. But we don't really need a lot. We kind of, we've already started to rank it, you know, through the submission, and it would be more just seeing if you agreed and if you felt comfortable, and then maybe if you could just let the planning board know that, so. But I don't know if anybody else is chomping at the bit to review these.
Yeah.
We do have more copies if there's more than one member interested.
It's okay.
[laughing].
I'm sure Mr. Murphy will do a fine job.
All right, so we'll work with you, Tom, and you can take these home. And again, it's low pressure and it's, there's actually not a whole lot of writing in there. It's a lot of, you know, boilerplate qualifications and whatnot, so. A month or so ago, there was a Mastat public hearing on the Route 1 resurfacing plan, and in that presentation from Mastat, we were surprised, for those watching Mastat, it's Mast Department of Transportation, and they're in control of Route 1. And we were surprised to learn that they intended to put up a signal, sort of, well, at the area of Main Street, sort of near where like the State Police Barracks, the Dunkin' Donuts, that area. They were going to put up a big signal over the whole of Route 1 so that people could cross there. And many of us thought that was just not necessarily, that just didn't seem to be a good idea. So I submitted a comment. Greg Spear, who's a property owner just down the street, submitted comments. So we did get an email back from Mastat yesterday that they had been very much on the fence on it, and based on the comments received, they're removing that from there. So we feel, even the police chief was a little surprised to learn, because I think they were thinking that people traveled, you know, around 45 miles an hour there, and they don't, so it just seemed a little scary. So it was nice to know that we're listened to. I guess the point is, is we actually put in input and we learned within a week or so that they've taken that off the table. We're in the budget cycle right now, getting ready for the budget gets voted next May, believe it or not. We're already starting now. Due to the COVID and free cash sort of situation, we've been, you know, as we all know, Foxborough is extremely fiscally conservative, so we've been instructed to make sure our budgets do not exceed 2.5%. We're not proposing to do any, we can do level funding. We don't handle, we only handle expense side of things. We don't get involved in any of the salaries. Those are all unionized and payroll handles that. But from an expense thing, we're proposing to stay level. As you know, we tend to not spend all our money as it is. We have some money in there that's for, if we need it, for grants and to match, and you can't wait for a town meeting cycle to do it. But we've had a strong policy all along that we, if we don't, we don't spend it for the sake of spending it. So I know in the old days, people used to feel like they needed to spend every penny of their budget by June 30th, otherwise they wouldn't get the same amount next year. And that's really not the case anymore, particularly in a COVID year. This year, we'll be handing back quite a bit because we just, we just know the fiscal situation and we, you know, I think all the departments are very aware of that. So the point being is it's budget cycle. Kevin might need to handle like AdCom. We'll have to see how that goes, just because I'm probably going to be out during that time, but.
No problem.
It's all the same, and you just got to do that big fight for architectural and engineering that we go through every year. But I was pleased when the Assistant Financial Officer, she acknowledged, she's like, well, you know, you need that for, you know, I wouldn't change that because you need that for grants. So I was like, thank you. So they're very aware, at least at that level. Sometimes at AdCom, it can get dicey, but we'll have to see. And then I just have some Uptown updates. I don't know if you all noticed the beautiful lights that the, a couple of the, those are private businesses that have did those lights, really great job, so pretty.
Did the Ohio, the same company do them?
They must have, because I think the Barrows went up first, and then I just noticed that the Corner Building 50 has it, so it's just, it's great. And I know in Easton, they had a similar look going on. So I feel, I believe there are more companies now that are doing that professionally, and you're starting to see them pop up in various locations, so. I think it's a great thing. And this year, because of the Common project, you know, the electrification, which is now finished, but it just got finished, so it wasn't like the town was in a position financially to spend $30,000 on lights on the Common, nor were we certain that the project would be done. But it is done, and so hopefully next year, there'll be some way to light up the Common. And I know the Marilyn Rodman, former Orpheum, has lights up going, and a light show as well, so it's kind of exciting. And I think next year, when Shovel Town's open, and Union Straw, and Sam's, and everybody, Rally Point, we're gonna, people are going to be walking around with all that lighting.
They'd like it.
So Wall Street, I think you might have all seen the video that was sent out today. They poured the foundations on 29 Wall Street. That's the property next to the post office. Proposed there are 25 single-family, a single-bedroom apartments and 25 two-bedroom apartments. So they're in full gear. They're hoping to be done in about 12 months, and they've just finished the pouring today. They're doing, continuing with underground utility work, but they're done in the street. So that's good, because there was some disruption to Wall Street for a couple of weeks. Fire station, they've completed all the demo on the fire station itself. They're doing the masonry block work, moving utilities, water line, drainage, and sewer. They're working with Shovel Town, that's the brew pub that's going into the first floor, and they're finalizing their build-out, where they're still hoping to open in the late spring at Shovel Town. And early December, we'll start to see them framing, which is now, I guess. Mid-December, we'll see plumbers and electricians. Then after they sort of get that whole front building, they've been focusing on the Shovel Town deadline. Then they'll start focusing on the funeral home, demolish that, and then they'll demolish 15 to 17 Market Street, which is good because the Board of Health just noticed it, and they brought it up at a meeting. He was like, brought it up as a troubled property in our ops meeting. He's like, we have a property I just kept on my radar, 15 to 17 Market Street, and we're like, oh, we own it. So we just got that from the Housing Authority, and it's planned, the developer of the fire station project, as you know, is tearing that down, using it for staging and then building a public parking lot after that. Both buildings have already been baited for asbestos by Doug King and Associates, and yeah, so that's that. And then Walnut Street, I think I already updated you that we did, or maybe I didn't because we haven't met for a while. We did get two proposals from responsive and responsible applicants, so we are now going, we'd be in the process of reviewing the applications. We just scheduled interviews for early January, and we hope to be at the decision-making in February. So we're still plugging along on that. And then lastly, I don't know if you all noticed, but we have a new business in town, Foxborough Nutrition. It's well lit up there, so there was a grand opening, well-attended grand opening, and they, it's a new business to check out, so. That's my update.
There we go. Very good. So first agenda item this evening is to talk about Mr. Mulaney, who's here this evening. He's been our town engineer for 18 years, and he is, unfortunately for us, but very happily for him, about to retire, or has retired.
Yeah.
So Norm, would you like to come up?
He doesn't, but he will.
We have a citation for you, and it reads, official citation, Foxborough Planning Board, "The planning board on the occasion of retirement commends Norman Mulaney for 18 years of service to the town of Foxborough. Recognition is given to Norman Mulaney for your exceptional service to the town of Foxborough Planning Department, where you gave of your skills and talents to the citizens of Foxborough, as well as your fellow colleagues in the town. We, the planning board, would like to present this citation to you with our deepest thanks. Your commitment to excellence is admirable. You protected the residents of the town of Foxborough by upholding safety standards and ensuring the highest quality work. Your vast knowledge and extensive experience has been an indispensable and integral part of our team for the last 18 years. You will be sincerely missed and hard to replace. Your unending passion for your work will never be forgotten as you embark on this next chapter of your life. The legacy you leave behind is one of professionalism and high moral values. Our best wishes go with you and hope you will now have time to follow your passions and your continued dedication to your family. Congratulations on your retirement. We wish you much health and happiness. This proclamation given under the seal of the town of Foxborough on this ninth day of December 2021, and signed by the members." Thank you, Norman.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate this. I'd like to say that after serving as a consulting design engineer before coming to work for Foxborough, it's been a pleasure working with the planning board, especially Gabriella Jordan. She came on board a couple of weeks after I did. We spent a good 18 years. You having trouble hearing from?
Well, we're just making sure that people at home here.
Anyway, it's been a pleasure really working for the planning board. I worked with many communities as a consultant engineer, and this has been very pleasant working for Foxborough. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much, Norman.
Thank you, Norm.
And I just want to say a few words. I really appreciate Norm. His dedication has been incredible, and we also wanted to recognize Mrs. Mulaney. She has been wonderful in helping us during all this time, so we wanted to give a gift to Joan from us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm.
Thank you, Norm.
I also wanted to say that he, since he started two months before me, I will be retiring in two months.
Denied. I know, right?
Anything on direct of subdivisions that we have to deal with, other than anything that's here for us tonight? And there's an A&R here for 131 Moore Street, is that right?
Yes. You have a copy of the plans in front of you? This is a property that was subdivided, I think in the 1960s, early 70s, and one of the notes on the A&R from the planning board was that if it was to be further subdivided, that the access would have to be improved. So the applicants, the property owners, have done that. They have extended the pavement, and also at the request of the public safety departments, they have added a turnaround for vehicles. This is the cul-de-sac that is shown on the second page, is not for frontage, but is only for the ability for the fire trucks, emergency vehicles, to turn.
Is that paved, that turnaround area? Hard paved?
I believe so.
Is it? Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I do have to say that this is a property of concern. I do believe you need to sign this, because as we know, for this type of plan, you're looking at frontage and access. But I do note concern, not so much with the operation associated with this improvement, but in the rear of the property, there are many trailers stored back there, and that area, as the town is about to be saddled with the ownership of the front portion, not of that lot, but of, I think it's Summit Casting Building, that the corporation has dissolved, the heirs, the estate passed away, none of the heirs will accept it, and now the town might be ending up owning it, even though we don't want to. But, and it has contamination on it, it has a failing dam, and it has a building. So that sort of has brought that area to light, and now, as we see this, I have to admit, at first I was thinking we should not do this. That said, that's not appropriate here, unfortunately, in a way, but I would like to convey to the property owner that, you know, this storage area back there is of great concern to the community, and unfortunately, this area is coming under greater scrutiny right now. So I would suggest that the board, you know, not look favorably upon future money-making endeavors unless it's going to be somehow tied to a, somehow cleanup and/or, you know, start making this situation get improved. It's really a big situation out there. So again, I don't think we can do it tonight, but I did want to pass the message along to the property owner.
Okay. Anything else from the board? And I'll accept the motion to approve it as submitted. So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Thanks. Oh, pal. Okay. There's only two, Gab. I think so. I missed that probably, probably.
No.
How many times have we, Mr. Butler, to put them all in the same place?
Well, we can blame Mr. Leslie, he's the one that drew them.
Since Tracy's not here, can I ask you to sign this? This is the form that says that.
How many times have we, Mr. Butler, to put them all in the same place?
Well, we can blame Mr. Leslie, he's the one that drew them.
Since Tracy's not here, can I ask you to sign this? This is the form that says that.
They all submitted it.
Yeah, we got both the October minutes, because I leave at the last minute. At the last meeting, you guys didn't have electricity during the day, so you couldn't read them. So October 14th, October 28th.
Who's John?
I miss him.
Okay. Any questions on the minutes of the conference?
No changes. I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the next item on the agenda is a special permit for an accessory apartment at 35 Cedar Street, submitted by Ricardo Figueroa, Gloria Figueroa, Richard Figueroa, and Wendy Vazquez. Well, how are you tonight? You're welcome to come up and sit there if you have anything you'd like to talk to us about. Do you want to tell us what's going on with this?
So the Figueros are brand-new residents of Foxborough.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
And they are, they have purchased a home on 35 Cedar Street. The home has an existing accessory apartment. The apartment was approved, I believe, in 2005, and it was approved under the bylaw that was under effect at that time, which was based on the square footage, percentage of the square footage of the home. The apartment, right now, is bigger than what we allow under our bylaw, but is grandfathered because of being an existing apartment. When the Figueros were in the process of purchasing the home, their, the real estate agent and them approached us about how they could purchase a home and continue using the apartment. So they're here, requesting a special apartment so that they can continue using the apartment at 35 Cedar Street. There was one issue that was raised by the Health Director, Matt Brennan. Because of the Title V definitions, we were under the impression that a bedroom required a closet. Under Title V, that is not the case. So if it's a certain square footage of a, of a room, and has a window and a door, that is, that could be considered a bedroom. Therefore, under their eyes, this is a six-bedroom home. The house is considered by everybody else as a four-bedroom home. It has four bedrooms, but has two rooms that could be considered bedrooms according to Title V. Paige had a meeting with Mr. Brennan, and one of the options that he offered was for the new homeowners to sign a deed restricting the number of bedrooms in the house to four. So it's some paperwork that has to be filed, I believe, with the Board of Health.
I think at the registry.
And I believe that the Figueros have said that they're willing to do that. So that would be, that was the only thing that, you know, popped up in the review of this application.
So just a technical question. I mean, the original, you know, interpretation, the one that you, that you and the planning board has always used, and as far as I know, all past building inspectors have used as well, is technically, I guess, in conflict with what the Title V. Has that always been a Title V thing, or is that a more recent addition to the change to the Title V regulations?
That I don't know.
We don't know. We could look.
Because I'd never.
It didn't look like it was something new. It looks like it was a definition that was just, I mean, he was able to provide us the section of code, so it didn't, we didn't notice, like, it wasn't like new or anything.
No, no, and I don't doubt Mr. Brennan's veracity in the case. I just never heard of that before.
No, yeah.
He told me about it.
We were shocked. I mean, there's a whole real estate way of looking at it.
I was going to say, how was the house, how was it sold to you? What did the realtor tell you? Four bedrooms, five bedrooms, six bedrooms?
Four.
Yeah, we were provided with the listing, and it says four bedrooms.
And the building department has it as four.
Yeah.
So to your point, I think, well, Title V is Title V, so that is what it is, and it seems like deed restriction. I mean, the irony of this is, you know, as I was talking, I'm like, this house exists. I mean, we could stomp our feet up and down all we want, but whatever we call it, the house exists today, so.
Yeah.
But I understand Matt's, you know, Matt's got to do Title V, but in this way, at least, future owners will know, I mean, because it is an environmentally sensitive area as well, so there is reason to make sure we don't overburden the septic system. But this seems like a good solution, and fortunately, it works out for the.
I'm glad. I'm glad that Mr. Brennan was willing to make the accommodation that the Figueros are also willing to go along with that.
But I think when we get our new building commissioner, this might be something that building, planning, and health will want to come up with a little bit more clarity from, you know, moving forward, like, do we have to go by this? Because their definition under Title V is 70 square feet, a window, and a door. I mean, that's, we've approved quite a few things with more than, you know, closets that size, so we'll have to see how that goes. We'll come up with something in the future, but well, why don't we get a building commissioner first, and then we'll go from there.
All right. Do you have any questions or anything you want to ask the board at this time?
No.
Okay.
Speaking of septic, was, did that have to be done prior to the transaction, or is it the same septic system?
It's the same.
It's the same. And just one other question. Says in your letter that you won't be making any external changes. Are there internal changes that you made? It's just basically, it is what it is.
Like it was.
Yeah, no, that is in response to the statements that we require as part of our bylaw. There's a certain number of statements about the exterior changes is one of them, so there, we're just responding to that.
Sure. Okay. So any, no further questions on the board?
I'm going to move.
Just Mr. Brennan's comments. No, no other departments, just Mr. Brennan's comments and a letter from the selling agent.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit.
Excuse me.
One note, and we should have mentioned at the beginning. Tom gets to vote on this, because it's a special permit, and we have two absent members, so he gets to do his inaugural vote as an associate planning board member. So we have another, we have a retirement and an initiation, all in one night.
Wow.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's quite all right. I'm glad you reminded me.
I would second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to the community.
Welcome to Foxborough.
Okay, very good. Okay, it being a little past 7:15 PM, we had a continued public hearing, which has been postponed to January 13th, and we have a minor modification to site plan approval requests from Gillette Stadium, North End Zone, Foxborough Realty Associates.
We need to vote to, can you make a motion to vote?
Yeah.
I mean, make a motion to continue the public hearing for 31 Water Street to January 13th at what time?
I would make that in the form of a motion.
At 7:15?
At 7:15 on January 13th?
13th, yes, please.
And I would make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Peter Tam from Colson Stores, on behalf of the applicant, Foxborough Realty Associates. With me, Dan Krantz and Woody Benesek Beal from the Kraft Group. I can start, as Woody's getting organized here, but this is a minor modification to the stadium site plan approval, and we appreciate having a few minutes of the board's time this evening to cover the basics and answer your questions. As a minor modification, this, like other minor modifications that we have sought, including recently, has to go through a process where we review it with the planning director and staff, and have an informal meeting with department heads where they have the opportunity to comment on the plan. That process has occurred and benefited from those comments, and the application was made, informed by those comments. As a minor modification, we need to demonstrate to your satisfaction. that these changes, which are sort of the second step in modernization of the northern end of the stadium, the first step being the modification that we sought from you a few months ago for Building P, the replacement building, for the fabric building, this is in the same general vicinity, and it encompasses improvements to the North End Zone. The improvements are minor in nature relative to the stadium and the improvements because there's no change in use. The operation after construction is going to be essentially the same. There's no change in parking or in traffic associated with it. This does not involve any increase in seating. And there's no material change in the design and use of infrastructure, including stormwater, water, wastewater, and utilities. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Dan and Woody to, to walk you through it, sort of step by step, because it does involve different levels of the stadium.
Thank you, Peter.
Evening.
Thank you, board. Welcome, it's been a long time. Thank you for having me, I guess it's better. Last, last we talked, we had gone through and done that Building P has a new name. It's the Kraft Group Building now. I thought Building P was a little outdated, so we've, we've changed that.
Excuse me, Dan, can you just drag that back a little bit?
Yep. I think I can.
Good, thank you.
So, what's it called, the Kraft Group Building now?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't get that memo.
That's all right. Anyway, so as you know, last, last year, we, we came before the board for South End Zone renovation with the scoreboard and concessions. This year, we're looking to do the same in the North End Zone. It's been 20 years, really, since the North End Zone has had any type of real upgrade. And much like the South, we wanted a, a larger, high-def board to show our fans and our football team and our soccer team. And once we started putting together the framework for this large new board, it became apparent very quickly that there's a lot of structure there. And when we got to thinking about it a little more, it says, well, we're going to put all that structure in there, why don't we do something with it? So, the idea was baked that we would basically move to this. We would create a club. We would basically close in the end of the stadium. On the field level, the lighthouse moves and shifts back slightly. It is now centered right between the goalposts. As, as you may or may not know, right now, it's a little bit offset. So, now, we'll, we'll have a new lighthouse, and I'll, I'll get to that because we're kind of going to change that nomenclature a little bit. But it moves to the center. There's a stair that enters the northern part of the stadium, right here. That stair will be gone away, and we're creating, the architects are calling this it anyway, and we'll see where that goes. Kind of the Walk of Champions, so we have a much more. A lot of the stairs at the stadium are very steep, and over the years, we've heard feedback as to the steepness of it. So, this is now, it's a longer stair, but it's a, it's a gradual climb. So, the feedback that we've received is that, that is much more appreciated, and people think that it's, it's really a better idea. There is a lot more site work that we intend to do, but as you can see, it's not part of this hearing tonight. Our, our intention is to be back in front of this board in the spring to early summer because technologies are changing for security. Technologies are changing for ticketing. And we have, we're working with Foxborough Police, Foxborough Fire on those technologies and how we're going to enter the building. And so, we'll be back in front of the board once we've gone through with public safety and gone through with our own internal folks and figured that out. So, we will be back to see you for the, the rest of the picture out here. So, if I go up, and now we're back to the main concourse. A lot of people have seen the main concourse. You know, back in the day, we had the old McDonald's right here and concessions scattered throughout. This is really much like the South End Zone. We're going to kind of take it down to its bones and build it back up with new concepts and new ideas. And, and now, we'll have an elevator that comes from the base at the lighthouse up to the main concourse. And as you see, it'll go, it'll go higher. If we move up, this is the club, roughly 30,000 square feet. You can see now, we have the connectivity of the stadium, so we have a 360-degree connectivity, which obviously, for 20 years, we have not had that ability. Concessions, bars, the club. The scoreboard that we talked about will be right here. So, this will, club will actually have a balcony, and the scoreboard will actually be out over the balcony to weather protect the patrons. And to Peter's point, this will be much the same kind of concept as the Optum Field Lounge in that we've added no seats, and we've taken no seats away. This will be a club for already-ticketed patrons.
So, the elevator, will, will that?
The elevator continues.
Will be used by the patrons to get up to that level?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and you'll see here, as we move up, there's elevators on either end as well. Because the, the, for this club, the restroom facilities actually end up on the next level up. And then, so this, this becomes the red level. Blue level's the same way, are two suite levels. So, we'll have restrooms, and then we'll have suites on either end, super suites, as they were, that will sell probably on a game-to-game basis. But that, that's all to be determined. And then, we get up to the, the 300 level, or the top level, which is actually now the roof of the club. And again, which is important to us. It gives us 360-degree connectivity all the way around the stadium. Air handling units, mechanical equipment in the middle, and then just some much-needed storage out on the, on the perimeters. Elevator up to here as well, so the lighthouse is continuing. And then, we're looking to activate this area as well because it's going to be a nice, big, new area. Not sure what we're going to do there yet, but a lot of ideas have been tossed out about how we activate that. So, I'm kind of excited to see how, how our people end up putting that to use. So, that gets us to kind of an old-school elevation. This will be all sloped glass. So, you know, for years, when you've seen the TV shots of Gillette Stadium from out in our Lot 4, it's, it's not been the most iconic view that we have ever seen. And this gives us an opportunity to put a real stamp on it and puts something that is just iconic and about Foxborough, about Gillette Stadium, about the Patriots and the Revolution. So, sloped glass, new lighthouse. As you'll see, there's, it was a new word for me, but the, the architects continued, called the Widow's Walk. So, it's, it's basically like a New England lighthouse. You get to the top, there's a ring around it. So, our elevator will go from the ground up to that Widow's Walk. There'll be a pair of the elevators, of the five elevators. Two of them will go all the way to the top. And you'll have the ability. Our, our, our hope and our, our idea is to open this basically 365 days a year so people have access to it. We're also planning, and, you know, this hasn't been something that's occurred at the stadium, to be able to open to the public, kind of inside the 100 level so that people can get inside, see the banners, appreciate, you know, what the Patriots and the Revolution have done over the years. That, I think, is our project in a nutshell. As far as the schedule goes, we have Suffolk Construction is working as our construction manager. We are looking to start this project as soon as the season ends, so we hope it's not till mid-February. And in the first phase of this, as I said before, the lot, the, the first phase will kind of take us through next football season. Next football season, our intention is everything will operate exactly how it does today at Gillette Stadium. So, that plaza that we talked about, the one we'll come back to see this board on, will operate the way it does today. And then, in 2023, we would make those changes to our operations once we've kind of settled on technology with local public safety. Behind this, and you see a little bit of it right here, that's our actual scoreboard on the inside. It will be 370 feet long by 60 feet tall, which will make it the largest outdoor, high-def LED board in the NFL. So, I think that'll be a pretty cool thing to, to have here at Gillette Stadium. The lantern is the way we are phrasing this now because it's not really a lighthouse, it's a lantern. This top is scheduled to be, or planned to be, just a, a very opaque glass, so there's never shining light. It's a, it's a glow, a soft glow, so that we, we have our, our lantern or our beacon out there. But then, you know, on special events, St. Patrick's Day, you can turn it green for breast cancer awareness. We can turn it pink and things like that. So, we'd be sensitive to some of the ongoing events and, and times that are in this country and, and be able to, to react to that with, with our new icon. As Peter said, we, we met with public safety and, and the department heads. I know issues have come up about Unified Command. I think we've cleared that up, and we're moving forward with Chiefs, Kelleher, and Grace. And I know the issue in the Health Department came up with reuse water. And Chris Gallagher is on. Chris was down at the stadium on Monday. We've come to an agreement with the town of Foxborough as to a plan and processes to how we will dye the water to test it, to test our reuse system, just so that everybody has a a good feeling that all the connections are made appropriately. I don't know, Chris, if you're on, and you want to weigh in on that?
Nope, just something that we've, we've been looking at and discussing with the Kraft Group for a few years now to do a, a once-over through the entire facility, the south marketplace, north marketplace, and then the stadium as well. The reuse system up there, you know, has been installed for 20 years now. There's been a lot of changes interior to Patriot Place over the years that we just want to verify that everything that's supposed to be connected to reuse is connected to reuse, and everything that's supposed to be connected to potable water is connected to potable water. So, we're working on finalizing those details in that plan and looking to do that work end of January, February, and into March.
Agreed, thank you, Chris. And then, I guess, we'll kind of give you the before and after. So, this, this is, you know, before the snow, as it were, but this, this is the view of Gillette Stadium as, as it stands now. And I will say, there, there'll be a press release about this tomorrow, but we wanted to be in front of this board and speak to the board in advance of that. So, that's why, why it's kind of waiting till tomorrow. So, so this is Gillette as it stands now, and, and this is our hope of our iconic new club and lighthouse slash lantern and beacon as we move forward into the future.
And this does not have a net gate of seating at all?
Zero.
Do you expect current ticket hold to upgrade to a club level?
Yes.
Ticket?
I will say that, that model for Optum is very successful. And they're.
The Optum is on a, on a per-game basis, correct?
Correct.
And what, you can go back and forth? Do you have a seat too, and then you just go back and forth?
Correct.
You also mentioned the light, how many people would be up in that, will be able to go up to the lighthouse?
Roughly 1,200. The lighthouse.
No, the light.
The lighthouse. My, my. It's 20 to 24, 25, somewhere in that range. We're kind of still working through some things. And that's another reason we wanted to come and have our, our hearing tonight is there's some discussions we would like to further with public safety and with the building department, and really needed to come in front of you guys and start that dialogue before we, we could sit down with those folks.
Do you have another view of that, the opposite of what that one is? So, we can see what the front of that area is going to be?
The inside.
From the inside?
Yes.
Not yet. They're working through that still with, I don't get to pick what goes on. Press releases, so they're just kind of tinkering with that still.
Just for purposes of clarification, do the objectives and outcomes that were envisioned as part of the land swap project, are those incorporated in any way in this?
No.
Or is it completely separate stuff?
It's completely separate.
Okay.
And as you can see, they have actually rendered in, you know, our Kraft Group building into this, into this rendering.
Now, Dan, did you say during the meeting that for next season, will there be half the scoreboard or the phasing?
Yeah, from a construction phasing, and we're still working through this a little bit with Suffolk. But the, the idea is that the steel structure will be up by next season, and we'll have, excuse me, and we'll have a portion of the video board put up so that we do not leave our fans in the lurch, so that there will be a portion of the video board up. It just won't all be up by, by the start of next season. And again, you can see all this pretty landscaping and rendering, but that's all the stuff that we're going to come back to the board and discuss because we know we need to, to put our, our, our ticket line and our security lines out there. And again, we're working through that with, with public safety.
And will there be existing seating sections, either on the sidelines, in the corner, or in the end zone that will be eliminated for this?
Nope. No, no seat is being removed.
Got to be sure, you know?
Mr. Chairman, to, to, in anticipation of some of the questions, and as Dan has acknowledged, we will need to be back before you as the programming and operations of the plaza is finalized. So, we offered, we thought it was a good idea to offer some potential conditions that might address, I think, at least some of the questions that you've already identified that, that we thought, and certainly, we're, we're open to your suggestion and, and, and staff's suggestion as well. But should, should the board authorize this as a minor modification? Obviously, number one, we need to return to review the specifications and plans for the plaza. To your questions about construction management, we would obviously need to finalize both the schedule and, and that construction management plan with plans and procedures, and, and do that in conjunction with filing for a building permit. And we would share that with you as well. Dan mentioned that we're accepting of the comments, both on behalf of the Board of Health as well as the Chiefs, and prepared to continue to coordinate with public safety on upgrades for the Incident Command Module, as it's called. And then, as part of the construction management plan, I think we would look forward, if you'll have us, to meeting with you again in the spring to give you an update on construction.
Does the Incident Command Module go to the moon and back?
At least to a lantern.
Okay, let me just read a few comments that are in the record here from Mr. Brennan, Director of Public Health. No objections to this. They, they should submit all food service establishment plans, establishment plans to the Health Department for review. In addition, this may be a good tendency that all recycle water be dyed within, within the addition. But I'll take Bob Worthley's and the Building Department lead on that. From Chief Grace, thank you for following up the notification about the very quick request of the planning board on the renovations at Gillette. At the November 10th presentation, it was discussed with Dan Krantz and his team by both police and fire about establishing a working group to redesign the inadequate Unified Command level currently set up at Gillette. There have been several attempts to get this project off the ground in the past, including previous construction plans being drafted. At this point, with the stadium nearing the 20-year mark in the spring, this appears to be the best opportunity to minimize the cost and map out a space that fits the current and future Incident Command Module. Utilize that Gillette. We, we do want this noted and hope to engage the Kraft Group offline this week on the matter respectfully. Michael A. Grace.
Just to clarify, a follow-up email was not sent, but Chief Grace did call me. I spoke to him personally. And after sending that email, he did meet with, had a really good meeting with Chief Kelleher and the Craft Group representatives. So he was fully satisfied as of last week.
And just as a side note, Foxborough's own Dennis Caldwell is the architect that will be doing that work with fire and police, and he's scheduled to kick that off with us tomorrow.
Great. Okay. See if there's anything else here. From Jane Pierce, this does not appear to be within the 200-foot riverfront area, so not to be believed conservation jurisdictional. And I believe that is it. Any other questions from the board or anyone else this evening?
Anyone in the audience?
I'm sorry?
Anyone in the audience?
Anyone in the audience? Any questions? Very good. I have one question. Why is the reuse water so much browner this year than it was last year?
It's a good question, and we've asked that. And it's been getting better, but it's, what I'm told, not being an expert, but because of COVID and the low flow rates, we had a lot of sediment that has built up on the pipes, and it's slowly been getting knocked off. What we've talked about is, and I know Foxborough Water's worked with us on that, is just kind of running some flows to try to clean it up.
I mean, I know it's wastewater, but it's still very unappealing to see.
Second that.
Okay. Do you have any input from staff?
No, we've been dealing with this for a little while now, so we're good. I think the conditions are good. Make sure it includes the Board of Health or the DPWs, the water dying thing, but beyond that. Was that in there, Peter?
No, that's a good add. A fifth condition should reference, to your point, the food service establishments, because there will be updated concessions be reviewed by the Health Department, and that the recycled water be dyed.
Perfect. Other than that note, we've...
It'll be dyed for a test, not permanent.
Right.
And that's, again, because one of, with Foxborough Water, there's been a request to use the reuse in some forms of irrigation, and would not like to necessarily dye my grass blue.
I'm comfortable with it as a minor modification. Yep. So are you a motion to approve? I'll make a motion to accept it as a minor modification.
With the conditions as...
With the conditions, five conditions as noted, yes. Is there a second?
I would second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Good thing. Imagine that press release coming out tomorrow with the "have they said no"? That'd be a rough one.
Aren't we seeing the press release before they came to us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Happy work.
Thank you. Very welcome. It being some time past 7:30 PM, we have a project update on Lawson Farms with Mr. Bonby.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to set the stage while folks are coming in and leaving, as you know, this is a subdivision that's been around for a couple of years now. Construction's been underway. The reason why it's been sort of expedited has been there's been a couple neighbors that have had some concerns, expressed it to the town. We figured it was a good time to bring Mr. Bonby in, because we had just been starting to deal with the, I think Gabby got a phone call about the streetlights a couple of months ago, so that was sort of brought it onto the radar. And then now, with the continued concern, we figured it would be a good time to touch base and see where we can go from here.
I think it's a good idea.
But just to clarify, there were some deadlines in the subdivision decision. However, with COVID, everything has told. You know, you can't expire projects, so they do have, I believe it was April of 2023. But it is time now to be looking at schedules and whatnot. Certainly reasonable to do that. But, you know, deadlines that did appear in the subdivision decision are extended due to the COVID state of emergency.
Okay, very good. So this session would be informational and conversational?
Yes. Yes. I think the main goal is to kind of get an update on construction and the plans, and then also to particularly sidewalk, street lighting. But in general, from this board's perspective, I think we're also interested in the next phases and sort of what the next steps are. And then obviously, there's a few interested parties here, so I'm sure they have a few things...
We'll give them an opportunity. Mr. Buckley, or Mr. Spillane, or Mr. Bonby?
That's me. So I guess I'll take the light first, the light issue.
Light. Streetlight?
Streetlight, yes. We installed two streetlights. The third streetlight was installed. It is not on. And we did not install the fourth streetlight. We should have. Mistake is mine. It got away from me. I didn't pay attention to it, and I should have done it, and I didn't. And it's that simple. Meaning, it's not actually simple. It's just on my shoulders. Mistake was made by me. And to correct that mistake, if I can say correct it, I'm trying to fast-track the installation of that light. And what's going to happen is as follows. Today, actually the last three days, I've been working avidly, myself, my team, people that work for me, with three electricians trying to locate a light and a pole. I can locate a light, but not a pole. So I reached out, one of my electricians reached out to the electrical inspector of this town. I forwarded that information to Gabby and Paige, just so they would see it, because I wanted them to understand that I was on it. And the electrical inspector agreed that I could use a temporary light, a temporary pole. And so my goal is to have the fourth light, which is not installed, installed by next week, the end of next week, standing up. With the light on the pole, the pole will be a wooden pole, built by me or my team. It will be wired, and an inspection called in. The third light, which is up and not live, well, whatever is needed to complete that installation, which I believe is just a very small item, will be done also next week, and the inspection will be called in on that pole also. After the call into the electrical inspector, and it goes to the electric company, the installer, they've treated me very well out there, frankly. I'm hoping they do the same. And I'm going to make a couple of calls to the people I know to see if I can get them turned on quickly. My mistake again, and I'm sorry that I put this board in the position it's in.
Okay.
And if you want me to, I can go...
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk, if you'd like to.
Sure, we can do that, and then we can now...
So about three months ago, four months ago, I called this gentleman to the right of me. We plotted some strategy as to where, you know, we should be once, you know, the last house or next to the last house or whatever in this phase is completed. We agreed. And please, Billy, if I say anything, you know, incorrect, feel free to correct me. We plotted some strategy that says, hey, what we want to do is sidewalk in, which means curbing, sidewalk, get the whole road ready for top coat, and get the sidewalk ready for top coat, because we're going to go to the second phase, truck traffic over that. Didn't make sense to put the top coat on, but we want it done other than top coat. So I immediately reached out to a couple of granite companies, a couple of granite installers. I located the granite at Swenson Granite. I ordered the granite. It was in stock. I then had two installers. I called Billy at that point in time. He came down and staked the centerline PKs. And if you go out there, you'll see a bunch of round circles all the way down the street in the anticipation of putting the curbing and then ultimately putting the sidewalk in. I called my installer. I said the PKs are in about two weeks after that time. And he said, you might want to check with your granite supplier, because we're running into major granite issues. I said, well, shouldn't with me, because I've got it, and it's all been on. And he said, well, I've heard it. I've heard that before. I called Swenson, and Swenson says, we over-ordered, we over, you know, allocated, we over-told people, and we shouldn't have, made a big mistake, and we don't have your granite. I called up Billy. I said, Billy, what am I supposed to do? Frankly, at this point, I wanted to be in a situation where we agreed upon, and we're now faced with the fact that I can't get the granite, and I can't do that until the spring of this year. So my anticipation is, is to put the granite and the base coat on the sidewalks the spring of this coming year, because I will be obtaining the granite. I spoke to Swenson yesterday and the day before. I have a quote from them. My plans are, is to pay them whatever I need to pay them, so the granite will be sitting there, ready for installation this spring. At that point, it will be installed, and I'll base the driveways, I mean, the sidewalks.
Feel free. Is, you know, in winter, freeze thaw, will that be causing any runoff problems, you know, onto people's properties? It shouldn't. We, you know, I haven't been down there lately, but I think we did this last year, where we had, I don't know, what did we put along the edges of the pavement?
We put some silt sock. Actually, I interacted. So along this whole way, there's more I could have said, and I could be here for hours, right? So I talked to the gentleman in your town inspector that you just gave the praise to, which is, by the way, a great man, did a great job. Me have spoken to his wife many a time, who chased him down for me. Great, great guy. So he came out, and he would come out. Every couple of weeks, I would call him. He's on my cell phone. And he would come out after a rainstorm to inspect the gutter lines, to make sure that we're not having any major washouts. And if we did, he made me put stone back in, et cetera. So we maintain that situation. I guess I won't be calling him anymore, but certainly we keep up with that. We also keep up with the silt socks. We've had twice a company come down and suck out the stuff in the catch basins and the silt socks, per Norman. He asked to do that. And so we followed that guideline. So to answer your question, I guess, is we stay on topic. We will look at that. Although Norman is no longer here, I presume you're going to replace him with someone. And once we have that person, we'll interact with that person.
So just to clarify, and I confess, I haven't been down there since summer myself, but we're talking about sections of the road that are, we have occupied residences. Yes, where the pavement is.
Yeah. And like I said, where I wanted to be today in those sections, were to have slope granite with base coated asphalt on a sidewalk, and starting my second phase, and thus, truck traffic over the road wouldn't ruin the wearing coat and the top coat. And then at that point in time, you put the top on the driveway, on the road sidewalk, and we're done, in the bounds, et cetera. It's just I was thrown a major curve with this granite thing. And I have interaction between myself and the granite company, et cetera.
So am I correct to assume that the biggest complaint by the residents is the fact that it's still a dirt road in front of their houses?
I can't speak for the residents. I...
No, there's no dirt roads in front of any houses.
No, it's all paved.
It has to be paved, or they wouldn't get a building.
It's paved. Everybody's driveway is, most is two drivers that are not topped. Everything else is top coated driveway. There are two houses that need some landscaping finished. And I can't speak for the neighbors. I can only tell you that paved road, paved driveways, and there are two lights on. There will be four, hopefully, there will be two more lights ready to be put on, subject to an electric company connecting them by the end of this week.
Mr. Bonby referred to base coat, and I believe he meant the base coat for the sidewalks.
That is correct.
Yeah, for the sidewalks, yeah. The base coat for the subdivision road to Phase 1
is constructed.
Yeah, constructed, inspected, and yes. P.J. Hayes was involved in that and oversaw that construction.
Does Chris have any? Chris is on the line.
Chris, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Oh, I'm just here kind of listening. You know, at this time, with Norm officially leaving and retiring, Lance and myself are helping out until the planning board makes a decision on what they want to do with inspection work moving forward. So, you know, definitely share my number and Lance's number with Mr. Bonby, and we'll, as things progress, we can be involved to do any inspection work. We'll keep an eye on it throughout the winter and into the spring. And then when they're ready to do sidewalks and curbing, we'll, assuming there's no inspector at that time, we'll be here to help out and take a look at that stuff.
So Gabby, you have my cell phone, if you want to share it with them?
I will, I will share it with Chris, yes.
That way, if for some reason you're out there and you see something, feel free to call me.
Excellent. Perfect.
Anytime.
Anything else from... So just for clarification to those people in the audience who want to speak, you will be allowed to speak. This is not a public hearing. It is an informational meeting, trying to get things corrected that you were brought to our attention that needed to be addressed. But we're certainly open to hearing what your concerns are about what was, what's not been done, what's been committed to, and if there are other areas that we don't know about, you can let us know about them as well this evening.
And if we could have the folks come up and just speak at the podium?
Yeah, and just do us a favor, just state your name and address for the record when you come up. So if there's anyone that'd like to start, you're welcome to do that.
We might have someone on Zoom as well, Mr. Kirby. So Mr. Kirby, we'll let someone else go first, but we do know you're there.
Just because...
There you go. Very good.
Nice to meet you guys. My name is Varaj Tiagi. I'm at 5 Conway Lane. We've been there since August of 2020. And some in the community have been there for significantly longer than that. We were in the village townhomes before then, so we've been Foxborough residents since about 2014. And Gabby, we've spoken on the phone as well. Thank you for engaging with me. So no ill will towards anyone, towards Iran. Iran built our house. But I think we're united in our concern. We're united in our frustration. We're united in our voice that it's been too long without sidewalks and lights on that road. We have pets, we have kids. The progress has been mind-numbingly slow. And I understand COVID could be a reason for that, but there are other avenues that I'm sure that can be sought after. If one granite supplier is not working, you can find a million other granite suppliers to build a sidewalk. There's only one light that I know of that's working, one street light. There's two. Where's that second one?
Is there one?
Okay. Okay, so, all right. So, and so, that's on Goodwin. Up Conway, it's pitch black. I take my dog out at 4:30, and I can't see anything, and I have to use my phone. I moved out spraying ankles. Cars have been flying up that road. I have kids. We've been, you know, there have been some near accidents. So, you know, I'm frustrated, because I've been there for a year and a half. I know 5 Goodwin and others on Goodwin have been there for two and a half years plus. And I understand the delays. I get it. You know, we're not unreasonable. But I think we've come to a point now where this is just unacceptable, and just frankly, really, really dangerous for all of us that are living there. Anyone else?
Can we do Mr. Kirby first?
Yeah, you can come up, and we're going to let Mr. Kirby speak before you, if you don't mind.
Perfect. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Yep. So Brian Kirby, resident of 7 Conway Lane, neighbors to Varaj. Been here since March 2020. You know, just want to echo pretty much everything that Varaj said around frustrations, challenges. You know, I'm a father of two. I have a three-year-old kid, seven-month-old daughter. So, you know, I would invite you, if you have the chance, I don't know if it's on your way home, just to take a drive-by, see what the situation is like, make your own determination if you feel it's livable and safe. You know, there are a lot of dirt ditches in front of the houses from runoff. I heard you bring that up. So there are some things that, you know, I don't know, I don't want to do he said, she said, anything like that. But, you know, my biggest thing here is understanding what some of the commitments were, what some of the timelines are. So at least we can understand when things will be fixed and, you know, have some sort of expectations we can work towards on our end from residents, because, you know, again, I've been here since March 2020. Like Varaj says, it's been a slow crawl. For any progress, there's been issues along the way, which have since been rectified. You know, through the whole pandemic, we had no mailboxes. We had to come in in person during quarantine at the height of the pandemic, during lockdown, to get our mail if we wanted to, because we didn't have mailboxes installed. So there is additional issues that, you know, have added to the frustration. Now, it's onto the lights in the sidewalks. So, you know, I think we're all on the same page, where, you know, even Bonby would probably agree. We just kind of want some resolution here, so how can we work towards that?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Bill Stiles of 2 Conway Lane. Certainly, I echo what my, you know, my neighborhood residents have also shared. Certainly, we're not looking, this is not a circumstance where we're looking to do he said, she said, what have you. But there are concerns about the safety. I share Varaj's concern about, I bring my dog out. I am one of the two homes that is not landscaped, and there are mounds in my yard. And so it is very tumultuous for me to bring my dog out, for me to wander around. There is... There is also based on the second, rather, the third light post, the one that's constructed and not yet on. There was electrical work being done where they had to dig in front of our home. And there was temporary orange tape and some cinder blocks put around a ditch that's about a foot and a half deep. And that has, you know, obviously fallen, blown away over time, but that has not been filled. And I am concerned, not really for myself, but there are three little children across the road from us. And they ride bikes, they run around. If somebody's coming down the road, doesn't see them, they need to move out of the way. They could easily, especially as snow starts to accumulate, go over towards that ditch, be riding a bike, not see it fall in. So there's just some safety concerns and general concerns there. Obviously, that ditch increases my concern about the drainage. I hadn't even thought of that until that was brought up by the board. That obviously brings a concern that like, I don't want like a big puddle in the, you know, front of the yard or anything collecting there that could be, you know, dangerous to the land long term. And so, you know, there's just some general concerns there. And I know that there was conversation about like, what does Phase Two look like? Or at the very beginning of board, one of the board members mentioned, what does Phase Two look like? When I'm sitting here with, you know, one coat of pavement with, you know, punch list items to do, lawn left to do, it's hard for me to think about Phase Two. And I hope that the, you know, the board considers, I know Mr. Bondi will, I don't have any doubts that he will consider completing the, you know, the items on Phase One before we begin to like move into Phase Two, because that will be exceptionally frustrating for all of the residents if there are items that are sort of lingering there that haven't been done yet. Because it'll feel like we've, you know, paid a premium to move close to the stadium, paid, you know, be in the area and not be receiving the sort of quality of life that Foxborough is known for. And so we really want to, you know, work with Mr. Bondi, work with, you know, towards a solution to make sure that all of these items are addressed. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Mr. Spleen, you have anything you'd like to add? Well, Mr. Bombi, I'm sure you hear your residents letting you know what their concerns are. And I think that in addition to the lighting and the sidewalk, anything else that was just mentioned, that you look into making sure that those things get resolved as quickly as possible. And even if you can get a crew out there to do something like fill a ditch or something else that seems relatively simple, that would be to your benefit as well as the residents' benefit. So we would encourage you to take care of that.
Understood.
Okay. I would just say for the benefit of the residents that I think we're looking at, you know, two different levels of dealing with issues here. And clearly, you know, we won't be into completing, whether it's the installation of curbing or final top coating or anything like that until construction season, I think of 2022. And you probably understand that yourselves. But certainly there are issues. I think we would expect that lighting to be addressed before winter socks in, for sure.
And then next week it'll be done.
And other, you know, I'm sure you probably have your own individual relationships with a lot of these folks and your own punch lists, you know, that they have their own expectations.
Totally understand. And just for clarity sakes, my goal and totally attainable, no reason, and it's going to happen by the end of next week to have another pole standing, wired, with an inspection turned in, the pole, it's up, completed with inspection turned in. Just for clarity sakes.
I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have unrealistic expectations of what could be accomplished, you know, now, even though it has been relatively warm, but that probably won't last.
Well, if I may suggest that we use this time, so I think it's clear that by next, the end of next week, you'll have the electric and whatever ready for inspection. That's clear. And then the granite and the sidewalk in the spring as soon as possible. But I think we also want to look at outstanding work. What's left on Phase One? Because I know you're probably getting ready to start thinking of Phase Two. So let's start. If you look at the planning board decision, there are some requirements to keeping updated schedule. So I'd like to get an updated schedule from you so that we can at least have some reasonable expectation. And certainly take into account supply chain issues. I mean, I actually, I saw Chris's face when there was a question about the granite. Granite is legitimately hard to come by right now. I mean, you cannot, so we waited how long? I think three, four months for paint or to fix our common. So, I mean, we have been having some construction supply chain issues. That said, you know, like say where there's a will, there's a way. So let's try to get Phase One done. And then let's, to a point, but I mean, let's be reasonable. I mean, even if it's to the end of the summer or whatever, but I would imagine over six months, you know, or whatever the number is over the summer, you should be able to get what you need and do what you need. And then also with Phase Two, start giving some realistic expectations. We also want to make sure, I mean, one of the conditions in the decision was about bonding. And I don't think we want to really kick anybody when it's down, because right now costs are so high. But we also need to keep an eye on that to make sure that the surety is sufficient to protect the community. So Phil, if you could just guide Mr. Bondi on, you probably understand, we just want to make sure we have a protected project and that we're on the right track to get these residents safe and comfortable. We also know you want to finish your project and get the remaining lots done. So let's try to find a way to get it all done so everybody can win and we can get this thing buttoned up. Don't want to miss this housing market.
Totally understand, totally understand. And I agree with you totally.
I think it's also important to note that the sidewalks cannot be constructed if the granite curbing is not in place. The granite curbing is what holds the sidewalk up. So without the curbing, the sidewalk cannot be constructed.
Hi, my name is Noreen Iqbal and I'm living at Four Conway Lane. I agree with all of my colleagues who've talked about the exterior work, but I'm highly concerned about the inside of my house. Because I have requested Mr. Bondi several times. I moved to my house in November. It's almost one year. I'm a physician. I work most of the time, day and nights in the ER. I have two kids. They're special needs kids. And I'm kind of disappointed and frustrated because not a single call of mine has been answered. Not a single email has been answered. And my punch list is sitting there. Nothing has been touched. And I don't know. It's like I'm calling outside from ER, seeing my patients. I have concerns. No one answered. And I have been several times humiliated by them. I have paid for that house, to live in a new house, to have a stress-free life, so I can take care of my patients, myself and my kids. And I think none of us deserve to go through that. My exterior is not done and I was threatened several times that if I said something, they will leave. They will not complete the work.
Have you said something to the contractors on site, you mean?
Yeah. And that has happened.
They've left?
Yes. So his, Mr. Frank, his son, he left. They was doing, they were doing the grading work and then he left. And I especially asked him because, like Mr. Bill said, there is a ditch right next to my, like this, where I turn my car in the garage and, you know, if there is snow and if it's really dark, someone can just go in that ditch. Someone could just have a head injury or die. And those, I know that probably because of COVID, he has to go through, the time is important and, you know. But the inside work is not going to take that long. It may take two days. It's very, they are very minor things, but we have right that he answer our calls and give us respect and then listen to us.
I would encourage you to do that, Mr. Bondi.
There's two sides to this story.
I'm sure there is.
I don't think now is the place or time for me to defend that situation.
Okay, very good. Thank you for your input.
And I will appreciate it if you can take care of it, please.
Well, that we can't really take care of. We're responsible for all the things that relate to the subdivision. Not so much the internal workings of the construction of the homes. But you did hear me just ask Mr. Bondi to please address it and hopefully he hears it.
Thank you.
Good morning or good evening.
Good morning. Good morning. So I'm Ashley Stiles. I also live at Two Conway Lane. And I realize we're not here to discuss individual issues. However, I think for context, we are all here because we have not been able to get in touch with either of the Bondis. As Noreen said, we are neighbors, so the grading is taking place in both of our backyards. That had been going on. Couple of days prior to the nor'easter, they took their equipment and we have not heard or seen them since. So I don't know, you know, we are all really here because we haven't been able to get in touch with Mr. Bondi. We moved into our home about a year ago. We have unfinished projects, a punch list that's four pages long. Considerable work that still needs to be done in our home, HVAC, landscaping. Our kitchen cabinetry is not finished and the materials have been sitting in the garage for a year. So I think our concern with the work that you are responsible for is that there have already been deadlines made and not met, promises made and not met. So that's our concern and why we're here is because we have not been able to get any conversation or FaceTime about the outstanding issues, both within our individual homes and in the neighborhood as a whole.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Two Conway Lane.
Please just come up to the microphone so.
Two Conway Lane.
And your name is?
Bonnie Rodman.
Thank you, Bonnie.
We are just hoping that you do not permit Phase Two to go on until everything that was promised us a year ago. Our house was started almost two years ago and we're not landscaped. We have walls not done. And as my daughter said, inside, things that were promised last August 2020 are still not done. So we're hoping that Phase Two does not go on until Phase One is complete.
Just trying to see if there's anything else in here in terms of Phase One timing, not including the individual homes, but.
The original decision has some time things in there.
Yeah. That's okay.
But they're all told, so it's so hard. You can't read them without doing a lot of math.
Paige, do you suggest an updated schedule punch list, maybe? Maybe walk a punch list again through the neighborhood with, or maybe Chris or somebody? Let's go, just walk through the neighborhood.
I mean, I don't, Chris, do you have any recommendations on how to expedite assist or anything?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the lighting being one of the issues and that's been addressed. And we'll be taking care of, you know, by end of next week, curbing sidewalks. You know, certainly this is not the time to be doing that work anyway. So springtime, as soon as he's, curbing's available and, you know, to Mr. Bondi's struggles. There really are only two, maybe three granite curbing suppliers in New England. Shockingly, with all of the, with the granite state just north of us, there are only two or three available in the area. So I certainly understand that frustration on supply chain issues. So I think, again, just a schedule from Bill Buckley and Mr. Bondi on the remaining items in that area. Lance and I are happy to review those, go through the plans and take a look at those items as well. And then to the boards, to Paige's point, Gabby's point, look at what the bonding amounts are for that remaining item, those remaining punchless items. We're happy to do that, too. And just while I'm on, I know there was one other comment, I think, from the Kirby's by email, just kind of thinking about winter maintenance through there. As this is a private subdivision, it's under construction. It is something of the town, not something the town can be involved with. But I haven't heard any complaints in the last couple of winters from that neighborhood. So maybe if Mr. Bondi could just touch on, you know, his intentions to continue to maintain and snowplow through that neighborhood through this winter. That might help address that comment that was made as well.
So there is a truck on site now. I think it's an F-500 or it has a plow. It plowed last winter and the winter before. We actually sand. I have a bill. I was reviewing some bills just so I'd be prepared for that question. I think we sanded three times last year because there is a slope there and that could get a little, you know, slick. So I fully anticipate doing the same this winter. I would think in some cases, maybe before the plows got out in some sections of Foxborough, this road could have been done even before then. I mean, because this, this truck is for that purpose. It's there right now. If you go up there right now, it should be there right now, although my son could have it. It's parked by somebody. I doubt it. Should be up there right now. The plow's there and he watches the weather. If there's a snowstorm coming, he puts the plow on. And if we think it's going to get icy, we salt it. And we plan on doing the same this winter.
Very good. Is it possible to look at some of these open trenches and these ditches that you have?
So the open trench they're talking about is the light that has not been hooked up and that is the connection point. So here's the transformer, here's the trench in this, in this general area. So there has to be something done between here and there by the electric company. And that's why that is, and it's got the tape on it saying, gosh, so should have been closed in by now, but it's not. So that's part of the. That trench is near that line.
You can come back up.
This is about the electrical, which is next week. So that's the most imminent issue. So Ryan, you said that, so there's two poles that work, one that does not work, and a fourth will be put in by the end of next week. But what about up the street, all the way up Conway Lane?
So there's one other in the cul-de-sac, correct me if I'm wrong, Billy? There's one other that's in the center of the temporary cul-de-sac, which cannot be installed. And it's up at the very, very, very end, which would be beyond your house at the end.
Okay.
Which I don't think is going to give you anything. So the light that I think you're most concerned about is in front of your neighbor's house, really, between the neighbor's house and your house. Which is going to give, by the way, the light that I've got is more lumens than it's supposed to be, but I've got it in my back of my car in your parking lot right now. And I'm not going to wait for another light. And I can throttle it back. It's a scalable light. My point is, is you're going to get some light.
So it'll be lit all the way up to the Kirby residence at Seven Conway?
It is my opinion when that light goes on, you're going to have substantial light in front of your house.
And I just want to clarify, I come from a community, I worked 10 years in Rentham. We didn't do streetlights on any projects, except at like an end of a street where it was mandated. So while I understand the desire for safety and there needs to be some lighting, the intent of street lighting and subdivisions isn't always to light up every bit of the street. Because we do have what's called the Dark Sky Initiative. And, you know, we all, if we put up streetlights every 50, 100 feet, we all see what's happening. We don't see our stars anymore. It sounds kind of corny, but, so again, you might never get the perfect amount of light. But it's meant to really be more at curves of roads and sort of for safety for that reason. And if you had a finished road, it would be that much more safe. So I just want to clarify that the test is not to have like a fully lit subdivision. That's actually a fail in my book.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Swathi Shapira. I live at Six Goodwin Drive. We were the second family to move into the neighborhood. So I know, I just want to touch on something that some of my neighbors just mentioned earlier, which was regarding Phase Two. What we've also noticed is there are a couple of plots that have been sold to other local contractors and developers. So I think there was definitely, there is some concern on, you know, Ron, I know you're vested, but like how vested is, are the Bondis to really like, to do a really great job with everything if plots are being sold to other local builders? I have a one-year-old and he just started to walk. And of course, the sidewalks is a concern. We have a ton of construction vehicles coming in and out. So it'd be really nice to have just some sort of a safe space so that we can actually be on the side as opposed to, you know, we see a truck, we're running this side, that side. So there's just, having lived there for about two years now, I can tell you that I think there's just some exhaustion on some of our parts. We're exhausted. We're burnt out. We're frustrated. I know part of it is COVID and we want to be respectful about that. But part of it is just the communication. I think all we're looking for is a yes, a no, a maybe, just some sort of communication. And I think if we were getting that communication, we would not be here today. So.
Just to your point about selling off lots, very common practice. And I'm sure no builder is going to come in and pay the amount of money that I'm sure you got. to come in and pay the amount of money that I'm sure you got for those lots, because that's a very nice area unless they were reputable and going to move things forward. So I wouldn't be concerned about that.
About that. That's, that's good to know, and they've been very friendly and very, very nice.
If I could just help, also, it's in Phase One, it's not in Phase Two.
Right.
So, yeah, so there were two lots. Frankly, my attitude in the building business is, right now, things are upside down, can't get things in, in construction. I'm beating my head against the wall. If, if other people want to do it, have fun, sell a lot, go for it. And so, and frankly...
It's common.
Yeah. And so I sold those two lots, both those lots is sold to Mr. Triani, a local gentleman, does a great job. One actually was, I had the agreement to build the house. I felt that I didn't want to get involved in building another house at that time and that subdivision. Why? Because help and other things. And so Mr. Triani said, I'll take the deal over, and I gave him the deal. And I actually discounted the lot so that he can make the deal, and so that he could build a home for those people. So it's been two lots, it's in, it's in the same phase, it's not in the next phase. And Mr. Triani was a local gen, a local builder.
Well, that's good to know, I'm glad you clarified that. But, but just going back to my point, I think the big issue everyone's had is just communication, and if expectations were set, whether they're good or bad, at least expectations are set, and we're able to make our peace with that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Gabby? How much money are we holding on Phase One?
I think Kevin has the, put it in the folder.
How much?
Uh, Phase One A, $300,000 that was submitted on the 31st of May of 18. And Phase One B, another $37,881 that was submitted on the 19th of February of this year. And there was an inspection fee amount, but that's seen regardless. So that's, that's what we have. Sounds like the easiest thing to do would be start communicating.
Again, I don't...
We'd need as many of these meetings.
I, I...
Some of these issues are planning board issues, and some of these issues are private issues.
Yes, we understand that.
You know, I think we're here to discuss the planning board issues.
And we are.
And we're here, some of the private issues, and I think Mr. Bonby has heard some of the issues with regards to private, and he'll, he'll address them as best he can.
That's what we want to hear.
But the planning board issues, as he indicated, he will address
Yeah.
as required within his permit.
So can you have that documentation to us, you know, within a month or so, within the next month or so?
Yeah, I mean, between the two of us, who?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's...
Just to keep it on the radar, you know, it'll slip off our radar, we get busy and, you know...
Your next meeting is January 13th.
Thirteenth.
We'll have it before January 13th, before your next meeting. Certainly enough time for you can review it before the meeting.
Before the meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then it'd be just great if you could just keep going, and, and so then that way, none of us have to get together in the future. Not that we don't love it. Come to all our planning board meetings.
All right, thank you for coming in this evening, Mr. Bonby, and addressing these matters as quickly as we can.
Sorry for the aggravation. I don't, I don't mean that in a bad way, I just...
Now, I know you don't.
I don't...
And I'm not taking it as that, and I don't, it's not so much of our aggravation.
You don't make a heck of a lot of money what you're doing and sitting in that, in that chair, so I understand completely.
That's okay.
The least amount of aggravation I create for you, the better it is. I understand.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in this evening, and I appreciate you listening to your, your residents.
I don't know if you want to stay on for, we're getting ready to talk about, how do you say it?
Wallamalapog.
Wallamalapog.
Wallamalapog Street.
But that's more Lance, so you don't have to.
I'll hang around. Lance is in class tonight, so I'll hang around for it.
Yeah, I know, I tried to...
Foxborough.
Hmm?
Wallamalapog?
Yeah, it extends from Sharon into Foxborough.
Two lots into Foxborough.
Who's the Wallamalapog?
Well, they're trying to come back to Foxborough. Have a seat, sit down and watch it.
People look at their houses, they're doing this, they're just busting up inside.
Is it a Wallamalapog?
Well, it doesn't yet. It's an old ancient way that goes in.
Yes.
By the, by the train tracks. Old Wallamalapog.
Old Wallamalapog.
Yes.
Oh, that's a good one, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come visit us in Chief Yard.
I was there last week. I drove in the dark.
Yeah, we're one of the first two. Land's a big home.
I'll, I'll drive through during the day.
He was just showing.
I agree.
So the waste of change, clearly.
All right, we're moving on.
I don't want to take this up. If no group...
Oh, I want to, oh, got it.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Hi, Bill.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good evening.
Is there a way to get my computer up on the screen, or should I just go with the boards?
Let's just go with the boards.
If there is, if there is the tech guy named Buckley just walks up.
All right.
I don't know, maybe, maybe...
It takes a little setup.
I'll just go with the boards.
I vote a hard no on that. That takes a little pre-set up.
Not a problem.
So by way of history, they're back.
Well, he's trying to do that. Attorney Frank Splain here, representing Steve Schreier, who is the owner of Wallamalapog Street.
Old Wallamalapog.
Well, it depends on what you look at, as to whether it's old or new for the name wise. I think technically, in Foxborough, it's Wallamalapog Street, even though in Sharon, it's called Old Wallamalapog. And I know they've been in front of you a number of times in the past years with regard to this. Mr. Schreier came to my office and we looked at it to see, he wanted to see the best way to move forward in order to get two additional lots down there. In, in my research, Wallamalapog Street originated, I think, sometime in the late 1800s. It was definitely there in the 1900s. For those of you who aren't familiar with it, it's, it used to come off of East Street, where East Street goes parallel with the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
And at one point, going towards Sharon on East Street, you would take a left, and shortly thereafter, you went, there was eventually a bridge built to go over the railroad tracks into Wallamalapog, and then up into Wallamalapog Street into Sharon. Sometime in the 60s, I believe, that bridge burned down and was never rebuilt. And the portion of the street in Sharon was eventually redirected within Sharon, and another bridge was built over the railroad tracks. And that was named in Sharon, Wallamalapog Street, and that's how in Sharon, it became Old Wallamalapog Street. But in Foxborough, it was never renamed. Am I getting that correct, Gabby? We could never find any evidence that it was ever accepted by Foxborough as a street, which would kind of make sense to me if that bridge was destroyed in the 60s, and there was no residents on that street at, anytime in Foxborough. But it was a private way, again, we believe from approximately 1900s. So it is a way in existence in Foxborough, and therefore not subject to subcontrol or road design requirements under the Foxborough subdivision regulations. All we have to do is bring it up to requirements of adequate access, as required under chapter That's my opinion. However, in meeting with the professionals here in town, the planners, the fire, DPW people, they asked us if we would come forward and do it under subdivision control. Originally, the owner was not very much in favor of it. However, after meeting with all the professionals, with Eric, he has agreed to, to do that. And what we're here, here tonight, Eric is here tonight, is to show you that we can do a standard subdivision under that, under the town regulations. But like many of the one and two lot subdivisions that have been in front of this, we'd like to get a number of waivers to reduce the roadway down, have no curbing, no sidewalks, because there are only going to be two lots down there on, how many acres are there, Eric?
About 46.
So...
Are the lots actually in the town of Foxborough, or are they in the town of Sharon?
They're 100% in the town of Foxborough.
Those of, not to interrupt, but those of you, for the record, Eric Dias, registered professional engineer with Strong Point Engineering. Those of you who have been on the board for a little while now might remember, a few years ago, we were before you with an A&R plan for this, that actually took all the land that was in Sharon and consolidated it into one lot and got that out of the way. So the only land remaining now is the land in Foxborough. Before, it was comprised of five or six different parcels that actually spanned the town line and really made things confusing.
How, how big are those, how big is the total area in Foxborough? Is it 46?
About 46 acres. That's right.
So some of the issues, we just wanted to, and Eric will get into it, is again, you know, we'll reduce the pavement down, discuss with you whether we really need a cul-de-sac or not, because it is a way in existence that goes right up close to the railroad crossing. And we believe that we can do it without a cul-de-sac. We'd like to discuss that a little bit with you. And again, no sidewalks or anything like that. Also, we feel that since, we feel that we could do this well under the subdivision control, we'd like to have a waiver with regard to the filing fees for the subdivision, because it is substantially greater than just an A&R filing. So I think at this time, we'd like to have Eric just go over everything with you.
I do have some half-size sets of the plans, if you folks would prefer to see those. Sure. Just don't skip ahead, you'll sabotage my big reveal.
Okay.
You're welcome. So this plan here shows the entirety of the 46 acres and the way in Old Wallamalapog. This is our concept plan to illustrate that we could build out a roadway that meets the layout requirements of your subdivision control by law. So what we would do, if you look at your plan, you're going to see a stone wall in here. That stone wall is the approximate limits of the existing way. So if we had to build this out to subdivision control standards, we have enough room that we could widen the right-of-way to a 50-foot right-of-way. When we come to the lots, there is actually a stream that runs through here. So what we're proposing on the lot development is a single common driveway, so that way we have less impacts and crossings for the stream. At the opposite side of the crossing, we would have a T-shaped driveway to allow emergency vehicles access to three-point turn and get back out, and then just two houses wherever they would ultimately be sighted in here. But focusing in on the roadway improvements plan, which is on the next sheet, and it's upside down. So this sheet just shows what a, a traditional subdivision roadway would look like through here. So the Foxborough town line starts here, we would widen to a 50-foot right-of-way through this area. We can, we have enough room to sight a cul-de-sac that meets the standards of the town, we would have sidewalks on both sides. But this roadway, to construct this, we'd be building sort of sidewalks to nowhere, because we don't have the right-of-way width on the Sharon side to continue them out to, to the paved portion of Old Wallamalapog Street. There are no sidewalks there now, so really, it would be redundant to require sidewalks on both sides. We've also shown just a closed drainage system. This land slopes naturally toward the train tracks, as you would expect. And we've sighted just a conceptual area for a drainage basin down at the end of the cul-de-sac. Really, we've got 46 acres, we could put that anywhere we need to. We have been out on the site, we have done some soil testing out here, we know that we do have fairly decent soils on the lots, and certainly, you know, we could absolutely illustrate that we can cite stormwater management. So that's our concept, kind of yield plan, so to speak. And then that brings us to the next set of plans, which is more illustrating what we hope to construct out here. I didn't include the lot development on this plan, but the lot layout would be the same. We'd still have a single common driveway to get over that crossing with some sort of a turnaround for fire and emergency vehicles on the opposite side of it. But we would put the right-of-way to what's on the ground now, in between those two stone walls. It's a variable width right-of-way, even both sides of it aren't even parallel to each other, they kind of do this sort of thing, but in general, it's about a 30-foot wide right-of-way. If you flip to the next sheet, you're going to see the roadway improvements plan that we proposed. This is the plan that has been approved by the town of Sharon. I only say that because it does show development of the roadway in Sharon, and I did it upside down again.
Sorry.
I even, I even spied on it this time and got it wrong. So this is the expanded view of the roadway itself. This is the right-of-way that you can see meandering through here in the existing condition, variable width, about 30 feet. We are showing the connection to Old Wallamalapog in Sharon, 18-foot width all the way throughout. This plan has been reviewed by the DPW, they've made comments, which we've incorporated, which is actually where we got the 18-foot width from, we actually wanted a little bit less than that to start with, and the fire department. Reason I bring up fire department is at the end here, we're not proposing a full cul-de-sac, what we're proposing is that where we come into the common driveway, we're going to overflare the ends of that driveway to give them the ability to pull up, turn it back out into a three-point turn right out of here. So there'll be a three-point turn on this side of the crossing and the house side of the crossing. We do have a detail here that shows that the fire truck turn does work. We are proposing to bring a six-inch water main all the way down the road to a hydrant here at the terminus of the road. That water main will be fed from Sharon, so it will be Sharon water, it's the only way to get water to the site. So obviously, we would need some reasonably substantial list of waivers, sidewalks, curbing. Stormwater drainage for this design is done by country drainage, we're sheeting to the side of the road this way with a swale along the road. We do have a drainage report that we put forth and that we can provide to the board that shows that we do mitigate all of our flows and all of that. So that's the overview of it. Glad to field any questions that you folks may have.
Is the double driveway 18 feet, too?
Double driveway, um, in the terminus, but probably 18, if not 16 at the, at the most narrow, I would think. You're going to want, that distance of a driveway, you're going to want the ability to pass on it.
Great.
So as proposed, that double driveway would be on one of the lots?
Yes, the way that it would ultimately lay out, it would be on one of the lots in an easement. In an ideal world, what we would do is we would actually put the driveway here and run it right up the center line of the two lots. The reason that we didn't do that is because this wetland actually comes all the way over here. So if we were to move the driveway this way and come up there, we would have a much bigger wetland crossing that we would have to do, it would involve filling of wetlands, probably an Army Corps filing, all of that. By shifting it toward the railroad track a little bit, we're able to cross where there's just the stream, and the stream is probably only six feet wide, we can span it with a box culvert or a big pipe, which is why we've shifted the driveway this way, and then, as you can see, it meanders its way kind of back to the center line.